Did we lose Elise?
Now we did.
I don't see her.
I just received a text from the mayor and she is going to attempt.
Is anybody there?
We're here.
No.
Yep, we're here.
We all left.
Okay, because I got knocked out, so I don't know if anybody else was. I had to start over. So I'm gonna call this. Let's get started. Okay. The, I'm gonna make a couple of announcements. The health, well-being, and public safety of community members, public officials, and staff is a top priority for the city of Agoura Hills. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic and consistent with the governor's orders, this meeting is being conducted remotely using, utilizing video conferencing and in-person attendance by the public is not permitted. To view the live stream or indexed archive of this meeting, go to the city's website at www.cia-agora-hills.ca.us and click on City Council Agendas at the top of the webpage. Public comments for non-public hearing items were requested to be emailed by 4:00 PM today. If you intend to speak on the public hearing item this evening, make sure you have emailed your name and telephone number, including the area code, to comments@ci.agora-hills.ca.us as soon as possible, but prior to the time I close the public comment period for the public hearing. Staff will call you at the appropriate time to receive your public testimony. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker. So I am now going to call the order, the adjourned regular meeting video conference of the Agoura Hills City Council of July 22, 2026 PM. Can I please have Councilmember Northrup lead the flag salute today?
Certainly. Everybody rise and place your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Anstad. How about Councilmember Lopez?
Hi, I'm here. We were all muted, I think.
Are you, okay.
Are we doing roll?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, I'm here.
Uh, Councilmember Anstad.
Here.
Councilmember Northrup.
Here.
Mayor Protem Weber.
Here.
And I'm Mayor Elise Buckley-Weber, here. Thank you. We have a quorum for this evening. There was no closed session held today, so therefore we have no report. So let's move on to the approval of the agenda. Will the maker of the motion approve the agenda and the person who seconds it please state your name for the record?
Mayor Protem Weber moves the approval of the agenda.
Councilman Anstad seconded that motion.
Thank you. I'll now call on you for a vote. Councilmember Anstad?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Northrup?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Weber?
Aye.
And I'm Mayor Buckley-Weber, aye. The motion passes 5-0. Moving on to intergovernmental special purpose committee and departmental reports. I have a report from the Lost Virginous Malibu Council of Governments. It's an update. We had our meeting yesterday morning. So briefly, we had a very extensive update from Dan Stepanowski, the supervisor of the Lost Virginous School District, and Leslie Stein, the president of the, of Lost Virginous Unified School District. So we thank them for that. Many of you may know they have a fabulous plan in place where students can have the choice. But now they are going back to all virtual learning. But the plan will probably come into place as the, with COVID numbers go down sometime for the second semester. So that's on Facebook if you want to take a look at what they have for next semester. Mikey Pearson is the new mayor of Malibu, and he discussed a program that they're working on over there called COVID Smart. The county is planning on rolling out a similar program. It's about getting some sort of a certification for a business that they are practicing all the protocols of the stay-at-home order. It's a marketing tool as well as informing residents every step of the way of which restaurants and which businesses are cooperating and which are not. There was an update from Aurelia at Congressman Lou's office about the 2020 census. You know, we've been pushing that, and thank you to Dexter for all the social media on it. The census, they will start to do in-person counting starting August 11th, and they will continue that till October 31st. This is tough with COVID, so if you have not gone online or called in to be counted, please do so now. You'll be seeing somebody at the door. They will follow the protocols and distance and wear face coverings, but be prepared that they will be coming to your door if you haven't participated. The last time I checked, I believe that Agoura Hills, we had about a 75-76% response rate, so we're doing well, but we're still aiming to try and get 100%. So if you haven't registered, go, if you haven't been counted, go to 2020 Census. You know, I didn't write it down. I think if somebody can chime in, I think it's 2020census.gov. But we'll check that and we'll be sure that it's, I'm sure it's on our website, so we'll get that for you. Let's see. Jeremy Wolfe from Senator Stern's office discussed a new bill, Senate Bill 474, which is to halt all development in a very high fire severity zone, which obviously will impact our region. Our COG homeless coordinator will attend a future city council meeting. I think he's looking at September to update all of you and answer questions on homelessness in the, in our COG region. Tessa from Supervisor Kuhl's office announced that Agoura Hills is slated to receive $253,900 from the CARES Act. We then had a lengthy discussion of goals and priorities for 2020-21. And, and these were how they panned out, so that you'll know. The number one, there was consensus that the number one issue is evacuation routes. And we've instructed our executive director, Terry Dipple, to continue working with the county on that. There, the number two was to look at retaining a lobbyist for the COG because of, and I believe there's nine housing bills now being discussed up in Sacramento. The number three was to look at creating a legislative platform similar to what we have in our city. Because sometimes by the time the COG discusses that we want to support a bill, then it goes to each one of the respective city councils, and then it comes back to the following COG, and that could take a couple of months. So to kind of cut out that lag time, we're thinking, we're gonna look at some sort of a platform and see if this five cities can agree. Fourth, there was talk about continuing. That was something on the agenda last year, and perhaps Dennis might know more about this. But the broadband infrastructure connecting COG cities, Terry Dipple has been instructed to continue discussions with Metro. And that was, those are gonna be the priorities for the next year, so we'll keep you posted on how that goes. Now, moving on to public comments, this section is reserved for items not listed on the agenda. And written public comments were requested to be emailed in advance of tonight's meeting. Ms. Rodriguez, do we have any public comments for matters not on the agenda?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do not have any public comment.
Thank you. So we will move on to the consent calendar. Written public comments for the consent calendar were requested to be emailed at the council tonight's meeting. Again, Ms. Rodriguez, do we have public comments on matters on the consent calendar?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do not have any public comment for the consent calendar.
Thank you. Does any council member want to be pulling off any of the matters on the consent calendar to have further discussion? Hearing none, then I will call, does any, so nobody has any questions or comments on the consent calendar? With, so I'll look for a motion. Will the motion to adopt the consent calendar, please state your name and the second as well?
This is Deborah Klein Lopez. I'll make a motion.
Debbie, do you second that motion?
I'd be happy to second that motion.
Thank you. So for the record, that was Deborah Klein Lopez seconding the motion. I have a motion and a second to adopt the following eight consent calendar items. Number one, approved minutes of the special city council meeting of July 8, 2020. Number two, approved minutes of the regular city council meeting of July 8, 2020. Number three, approved demand warrant register, number 833. Number four, approve a two-year agreement for contractor services with Granicus LLC for web streaming services. Number five, approve agreement, E Information Systems, Inc., for half cabinet co-location and fiber connectivity services. Number six, approve a letter to request the state of California defer and/or delay the element deadline. Number seven, adopt resolution number 20-1950 revising the temporary guidelines for virtual development project in public forums during the COVID-19 pandemic and rescinding resolution number 20-1941. Number eight, adopt resolution number 20-1951 approving the Lost Virginous Malibu Council of Governments amended stated joint powers agreement. So I'll call on a vote now. Councilmember Anstad?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Northrup?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Buckley-Weber, aye. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you. We'll now move on to public hearings. Our next item is to conduct a public hearing to consider the adoption of resolution number 20-1952 establishing fiscal year 2020-21 appropriations limitations and resolution number 20-1953 adopting the annual budget for fiscal year 2020-21, including fiscal year 2020-21 appropriations and authorizing amendments for fiscal year 2019-20 annual budget. As mentioned at the start of this meeting, written public, written, written public comments were requested by 4:00 PM today. If you intend to speak on the public hearing item this evening, make sure you have emailed your name and telephone number, including the area code, to comments@ci.agora-hills.ca.us as soon as possible, but prior to the time I close the public comment period for the public hearing. Staff will call you at the appropriate time to receive your public testimony. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker. I'm gonna defer to Kristi Pinwelles to provide the staff presentation. So just as a reminder, if you want to testify tonight, you need to email your telephone, name and telephone number, including the area code, to comments@ci.agora-hills.ca.us. Kristi, you're on.
Yes. Hello. Honorable mayor, members of the city council, the city has a two-year budget plan and is currently in the second year of the plan. While traditionally adopted in June, this year, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the city council delayed adoption. The public health crisis created circumstances that complicated the projection of revenue and expenditures, and the council held additional workshops and subcommittee meetings to reconsider goals and budget accordingly. Staff is recommending that the city council adopt and appropriate the fiscal year 2020-21 budget and approve amendments to the 1920 budget. The general fund budget is balanced. The 2020-21 revenues in the general fund are projected to be $16.8 million, and proposed expenditures and operating transfers are recommended at $16.8 million. There are special funds will be utilized for specific projects over the next year. And for the general public, those funds are comprised of one-time grant funds or funds that are earmarked or limited to specific uses such as transportation capital projects. The fiscal year 2020-21 Capital Improvements Project Plan includes $9.3 million in special funds for work on projects. The Finance Committee, City Council, and staff has spent a significant amount of time looking to the needs of the community, establishing measurable goals, and creating a budget that is aimed to accomplish those goals. Staff will monitor the budget closely and report back to council at the end of October unless an earlier date is needed. Staff respectfully recommends that the city council adopt resolution number 20-1952 establishing fiscal year 2020-21 appropriation limits and resolution number 20-1953 adopting the annual budget for fiscal year 2020-21 and authorizing amendments to the fiscal year 2019-20 budgets. And I'm available for any questions.
Yeah, so we're gonna run through and see if any council members have questions. Councilmember Anstad, do you have any questions?
No, no questions at this time. Thank you.
Councilmember Lopez?
No questions.
Councilmember Northrup?
No questions.
Mayor Protem Weber?
No questions.
And Mayor Buckley-Weber, I have no questions as well. So let me just, as a reminder, so now, if you're out there in the public and you want to speak on this item, make sure you email your name and telephone number to comments@ci.agora-hills.ca.us prior to the time I close the public hearing. As we are taking live calls, please note there may be a slight delay in between setting up for the next public speaker. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker. A speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. So I'm going to open the public hearing, and I'll now just defer to Ms. Rodriguez, our city clerk, for public comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have not received any requests to speak.
Thank you. I'm gonna give it a minute, and this is the last call for public speakers. If you wish to speak on this item, email your name and telephone number to comments@ci.agora-hills.ca.us. We'll take a short pause to allow for those last call emails.
Madam Mayor, your mic is not on?
Sorry about that. I have a lot going on in the House, so I keep turning it off. Okay, so a minute has passed. So let me check with our city clerk, Ms. Rodriguez. Are there any further public speakers?
Thank you. We do not have any public speakers.
Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and I'm gonna call on each council member to either ask questions or to provide comments. So Councilmember Lopez, why don't we start with you?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have no, no questions, and I, I just want to say that I appreciate the additional time that we took to grapple with the effects of COVID-19 at the end of last year's fiscal year and anticipating the next fiscal year. So I want to thank everyone from the staff to the finance committee and my fellow council members for, for taking some extra time on this. I feel well-versed. I know my fellow council members probably do as well. It was very worthwhile. I think it is a huge feat to have a balanced budget for fiscal year 2020-2021. And again, I just, I can't thank Ms. Pinwelles enough for her hard work with her staff and, and the committee to, to make those choices that were, I'm sure, very hard to get to a balanced budget. Very hard choices, and a lot of hard work went into that. So it, it is really a difficult year, and I'm proud of where we stand right now. I'm proud of the prior councils, as we've discussed, for getting us into this very strong position to weather the storm, and I'm ready to proceed with the motion and adopt the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. How about Councilmember Northrup?
Well, I, I concur with everything that was just said by my fellow councilwoman, Deborah Klein Lopez. I, I just am so grateful for the foresight of the people that came before us to maintain healthy reserves because, you know, rainy days are inevitable, and having reserves helps you manage them, and we're able to preserve essential services and the things that our residents need to be safe and healthy and happy. And I too am prepared to move forward with this budget with a lot of gratitude to our city staff and team.
Thank you. Councilmember Anstad?
Yes, I, I would like to actually first thank the city manager, our new city manager, I should say, Nate Hamburger, for kind of coming up with the initial list of items to make sure that we stay in a balanced budget. And also, obviously, our finance staff working, working with them. And, and then also, obviously, us as a city council, I think that we've done a good job trying to take that, those recommendations, trying to refine them, and, and then coming up with a balanced budget. So this is a tough time for all cities here in California, and I think that we've done a fantastic job balancing our budget. And also, it's also due to past city councils as well, putting, putting money aside as well. And so I think that we're in a great position, and obviously, we're gonna monitor things closely and make sure that we stay in that position going forward. So I just want to thank everybody for their efforts. Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Weber?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I, I have to agree with what's been said by my colleagues. This is such a unique time in the city's history, and a budget, doing a budget like this has been a, a, a great feat. So I think that what we've done and, and the end product can really show the residents and the businesses how they can embrace all the efforts put in by, again, with Nate and Kristi and her team. It's just, it's, it's mind-boggling what we've been through the last 17, 18 weeks. But I thought, I have to echo what my colleague said about prior councils. And, and I think, going forward, I think we, we've set each other, we've set us ourselves up for, for showing the public what we're capable of in the way of budgets and, and minding the store. So I'm happy to move forward with this, and I appreciate all the efforts on everyone's part.
Thank you so much. And so I agree with everything that my fellow council members have said. I heartfelt thanks to Ms. Pinwelles and her staff, and to our past city manager and our new city manager for everything, not just this year and in the last six months, but for the past years, to have policies in place that help past councils have strong reserves, which is, you know, what we're using for our balanced budget. We're not done yet, and even if we adopt this budget, we, there's still a lot of work to do. And I know that Kristi and her team, and I know that our finance subcommittee are gonna be hardworking to make sure, tweaking the numbers, make sure our projections are accurate and moving forward. So you, you have our support, and if there's anything you need from us, just holler. For the public, I just want to say, I know I've said it a few times, but if you shop in Agoura Hills, if you eat in Agoura Hills, if you buy gas in Agoura Hills, for every dollar you spend, it's a win-win because it helps our local businesses, and at the same time, those taxes are our revenue sources. And so you're helping the city to provide all the services that you moved to Agoura Hills for. So keep up the good work of supporting our local businesses. And I think now, if I can get a, a motion and a second to adopt resolution numbers 20-1952 and 20-1953.
Councilmember Anstad would like to, to go ahead and move to adopt resolution 20-1952 and 1953.
Mayor Protem Weber will second.
Thank you. So now I'll call for a vote. Councilmember Anstad?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Northrup?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Buckley-Weber, aye. The motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to everybody. It was a lot of hard work. Moving on now to a discussion, action number 10. Our next item is a discussion regarding the Los Angeles County Local Agency Formation Commission, LAFCO, draft, review, and sphere influence update. And I will be deferring to Allison Cook to provide our staff presentation tonight. Take it away, Allison.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. As the council-
As the councils aware, the city has been looking for the past several years at various unincorporated LA County areas on our eastern boundary for possible annexation. And we have two applications currently into LAFCO for annexation and a sphere of influence amendment, both again on the east side of the city, one north of the freeway and one south of the freeway. And about a year ago, LAFCO indicated to the city that it would be preparing a municipal service review, or MSR, for Agora Hills as well as other nearby cities all in this portion of LA County. And the MSR does many things, but one thing it does is look at, in a comprehensive way, unincorporated areas of the county and various cities that those areas could be incorporated into through annexation or sphere of influence amendment. So given that, the city is holding right now on further pursuing our applications to LAFCO until the MSR is completed and finalized by LAFCO. And as you were aware, last Friday, the draft MSR was made available to the public. LAFCO contracted with a consulting firm, Policy Consulting Associates, with Jennifer Stevenson, the principal of that firm, to actually prepare the document. And so Jennifer is here this evening to describe some of the findings of the draft report and answer some of your questions. And so with that, I'm going to bring up the PowerPoint. And going to turn it over to Jennifer Stevenson. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to present here the public review draft of the municipal service review to you tonight. The report covers the cities of Agora Hills, Calabasas, Hidden Hills, and Westlake Village. As Allison mentioned, the draft report was released last Friday. It's open for public comment through August 13th. So please direct your comments to me or submit them on the project website. The report, the determinations, and the recommendations regarding each city's sphere of influence will be considered for adoption by the Local Agency Formation Commission at its September 9th meeting. So a municipal service review, or MSR, are required to be conducted by LAFCOs in each county according to state law in order to inform a sphere of influence update. The sphere of influence is an indicator by LAFCO of where future growth of boundaries for a city or district may occur. As an example, if a city's sphere of influence extends beyond its boundaries, that's an indicator by LAFCO that the agency has an adequate capacity and level of services to provide services to that area in the future and anticipates that the agency will eventually annex the territory. In order to annex territory, an agency's sphere of influence must first be consistent with the proposed annexation. That said, there is required content in an MSR to inform the sphere of influence update. The commission is required to come to seven determinations that are listed here. These include present and planned capacity of public facilities and adequacy of public services, including infrastructure needs or deficiencies, the location and characteristics of disadvantaged unincorporated communities within or contiguous to the agency's sphere of influence, growth and population projections for the affected area, financial ability of agencies to provide services, status of and opportunities for shared facilities, accountability for community service needs, including governmental structure and operational efficiencies, any other matter related to effective or efficient service delivery as required by commission policy. The content of the report aims to inform these determinations, and all the determinations are summarized at the end of each city's chapter in the report. The process for this MSR began back in October. The reviewed cities were involved from the beginning of the project through responses to requests for information, one-on-one city interviews, and a review period for each city's respective draft chapter. In addition, we are conducting outreach to the cities and their constituents as well as soliciting comments and input through these presentations at city council meetings for each of the cities. Additionally, this project has gone through great lengths to keep the public informed and solicit public input. Public outreach has included a project website, development of an email list of interested parties, distribution of the public review draft to those parties, stakeholders, and governing body members for public review. The public will have another opportunity to provide input when the report is considered for adoption by LAFCO in September. This brings us to the highlight of the presentation, the Sphere of Influence Update Discussion and Recommendations for the City of Agora Hills. The city's sphere is and has been for quite some time coterminous or the same as its boundaries. As discussed, this would indicate LAFCO does not anticipate annexation of additional territory by the city. However, this is not necessarily the case, and is actually the result of just a dated SOI or sphere of influence. A need to comprehensively review and update Agora Hills' sphere along with its neighboring cities was identified, and thus the aim of this project was to thoroughly review the sphere options available and make recommendations. So you should have a map in front of you right now. And for the purposes of the sphere analysis, these areas were mapped and identified with a letter for reference. There's abbreviated descriptions of each area are found on the next slide. However, this map gives a better visual as I'm describing them, so let's stay here while I describe each area. Area I, first there, lies along Agora Road and consists of forty-three acres with five properties. Three developed for commercial uses, one open space and one vacant. The unincorporated territory is in essence a service island. Given the barrier of Highway 101 to the north and access to the area is through either the city of Agora Hills or city of Calabasas. The two cities submitted competing applications to LAFCO to annex this property. Calabasas' application was denied, and Agora Hills' application was not processed to completion. Given the proximity of the property, Agora Hills has concerns about uses impacting its residential community to the immediate south along Liberty Canyon Road as the nearest residential community to the property. Area L, you'll see there to the east, consists of mostly vacant uninhabited land with portions of Chesebro Canyon Creek and Chesebro Road. The cities submitted an application to LAFCO for annexation of Area L. The area was proposed for annexation to include the proposed Agora Equestrian Estates development in the city and to add the portion of Chesebro Road that is in unincorporated territory, which presents a challenge to the county to serve. The Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy has since purchased the proposed project property in an effort to preserve it, which has blocked the Agora Equestrian Estates development from occurring. And the Conservancy, however, has indicated that it does not object to being annexed into the city. Area M is a forty-acre mostly-developed residential subdivision known as the Estates. It is an unincorporated island only accessible via Agora Hills, making Agora Hills the most efficient service provider to the area. Area N, there to the west, is located along Liberty Canyon Road. It consists of residential and open space territory that is mostly developed. It is one of the subject territories of one of the city's applications for annexation from 2018. And Area O, just to the south of Area N, is also along Liberty Canyon Road. It's zoned as light agriculture with a largely complete residential development. It is important to note that the residents in the developed areas M, N, and O are considered divided communities of interest that are separated from the other neighboring developed subdivisions due to their exclusion from a city and related levels of service granted to the residents. Area P, also known as Triangle Ranch, was once considered for a larger development. However, a majority of the property has since been purchased by the Conservancy for the purposes of preservation. The western portion of Phase Four of the Triangle Ranch project remains privately owned with an approved tract map for up to thirty-four ranch-style homes, but the project has not yet begun construction. And finally, Area Q is an undeveloped single parcel zoned as light agriculture with steep terrain. The area is identified as significant ecological area in the county's general plan. And given the parcel's designation as an SEA and related restrictions on growth, construction on and use of the parcel while not prohibited is not anticipated to occur in the near term. Okay, and that brings us to the slide I mentioned, a summary of those areas, I through Q. And finally, the recommendations. LAFCO is charged with promoting logical boundaries and limiting islands of unincorporated territory and other inefficient service structures. Consequently, it's recommended that areas M, N, and O be included in the city's sphere of influence to create more logical city boundaries and integrate the now-divided communities. Area L also faces similar service inefficiencies, specifically that short stretch of Chesebro Road that briefly exits Agora Hills and then reenters the city as the responsibility of the county. The county and the city have agreed that service provision would be more effective if the city were to annex the territory and maintain the street. For this reason, it's recommended that Area L also be included in the city's sphere of influence. Area P continues to have potential for development. Should the area realize development, Agora Hills would be the appropriate service provider, given its proximity to the property. Area P is also recommended for inclusion in the city's sphere of influence. And given the unlikelihood of development occurring in the near future in Area Q with an associated need for city services, there's no cause to include this property within the city's sphere of influence at this time. And now the big one. Area I has been under contention in recent years as indicated by the competing applications for annexation. Additionally, as mentioned, the area is a service island. In order to minimize illogical boundaries, the territory should ultimately be included in a city's sphere of influence to indicate LAFCO's intention to accomplish this aim and allow whichever city to appropriately plan for annexation of the area. However, because the present contentious nature of the territory, it's recommended that LAFCO consider defining Area I as an area of concern. Areas of concern are used by LAFCOs for geographic areas beyond the sphere of influence in which land use decisions by other governmental agencies or one local agency impact another agency. Alternatively, the three agencies, talking about the county, city of Agora Hills, and the city of Calabasas, could formalize their mutual commitment to coordinated land use planning in the area with their own jointly-designed agreement. A cooperative land use agreement between the three agencies could be a useful tool to allay concerns on the part of the cities regarding potential changes in use, could also ensure city involvement regarding decisions for an area that either city might annex and serve in the future. And it would also work towards agreement on which city may eventually annex the area. And I am now available for questions.
Thank you so much, Jennifer. We appreciate that explanation, and you did a good job narrowing it down. I know it's quite a long report for everybody. So let's start. I want to just remind my fellow council members, this is a discussion item. It's a draft report. So why don't we start with questions to Jennifer, and then I'd like to get your thoughts on, you know, this will eventually go back to the ad hoc committee, which is myself and Lyndon Northrup, and we can come back to the council again with additional recommendations. But for right now, we'll have a discussion item, ask questions, and you guys can give up your input on your thoughts on these five or six areas. So let's start with questions. Councilmember Anstead, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. Jennifer, I want to talk about, obviously, Area I. So, a big surprise. One of the questions, I guess, the first question I have is, like this mutual area of concern, is there going to be, like, what would, if we move forward with this, would there be like a committee made up of like one person from each, like a designated or maybe two people from each city, and then two people from the county or something that sit on this planning group? Or tell me what the county envisions, how to deal with, trying to come up with a mutual agreement?
In essence, it would be up to the desires of the three agencies. I could envision it including a representative or two from each agency coming together to come to, and I know there's concern about a formal agreement, but at least to start discussions with the potential of coming to some kind of joint agreement.
Okay, so it's kind of like, I mean, if, as an attorney, I guess the only way, I mean, I view it as kind of like a mediation, basically where the county's bringing the two cities together and then trying to discuss ways that we can try to work this out. Is that a good description of kind of what the county envisions?
Well, and I don't know that the county itself necessarily has a vision regarding this since it's coming from us and recommendation to LAFCO, but that is part of it in a nutshell, to start discussions and perhaps hash out issues. And then discussing those areas of concern and not as represented here, but areas that were discussed previously during the annexation process that Calabasas was going through. There's a long list of concerns on the part of the city of Agora Hills and
I'm sorry, I lost you.
Oops. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you. I just lost you for the last thirty seconds.
Okay. In any case, there are concerns on the part of both cities regarding uses in that area. And yes, it would in essence be some kind of mediation, but coming to an agreement on what would be appropriate uses in the hope that while it might not be able to be a formalized agreement, it could be an informal agreement of sorts.
Okay. And so in the meantime, isn't there, there is revenue coming from that one commercial property, am I correct?
Yes, there is.
And tell me what's happening with that revenue right now?
Any property tax revenue related to the property there is going to the county at present.
Okay. All right, those are my questions. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Northrup? Do you have questions?
I don't have any questions. I was on the committee, and we got a good chance to work over, work through the issues. So I just appreciate all the hard work that went into this, and I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you. Just two quick questions. More of a clarification to make sure that I'm understanding, and thank you. The report was very, very thank you, the report was very, very easy to follow along with, and, and so I want to thank you for that, especially because I know we have a lot of members of the public who aren't, maybe as familiar with some of the land use issues in terms of sphere of influence and things like that. So I just want to clarify, with the sphere of influence, it, it, two agencies can't overlap with their sphere of influence, is that right? So, for example, Area I, you can't have two agencies or more all have a legal sphere of influence in one area?
Correct. In the case of cities, yes, you would not have two cities' sphere of influences purposefully overlapping one another, because it would be contraindatory to the others. So it could happen by mistake. In the case of a city in a special district, yes, you can have overlapping spheres, but not in the case of two cities.
Okay, okay. And so, Area I was not in either Calabasas's or Agora Hills's sphere of influence before, nor is it now?
Correct.
Is that, that's right. So what, what threw me a little bit is that somewhere in the report I read, and I quote, "Territory cannot be annexed unless it is in, within that agency's sphere." So how is it that two cities were able to put in annexation applications when it was in neither of our sphere of influence?
So, in the case of a small area like that, a, an application can include a simultaneous sphere of influence amendment. So first, LAFCO would approve a sphere amendment and then approve the annexation, likely in the same meeting, but it would happen simultaneously to ensure that...
Simultaneously. Okay, all right, that was, that was a little confusing to me. Okay, I think those were, those were my questions, thank you.
Mayor Protem Weber, do you have any questions?
I do, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have just really basically one question. We were told a long time ago when we started this process that the owner, if an owner of a property within that area, what are I, does not want to be annexed by a city, that sort of puts a damper on the ability to annex. And is that correct, or have, I mean, or has things changed?
There's a protest hearing that could occur, and if sufficient protest is met, then it would require an election. In the case of an area that's uninhabited, it's different circumstances, but LAFCO would still, it would bear great weight on the decision of LAFCO.
Well, I don't, I didn't, I guess I didn't get my question answered. If, if one of the owners of one or both of those parcels chooses not to be annexed by Calabasas or Agora Hills, does it, does it have to go to LAFCO to make that decision when neither one wants to be annexed?
It would come to LAFCO no matter what, whether there's support or not from the landowners themselves, but what I'm saying is, is that the landowner's preference would bear great weight on LAFCO's decision.
All right. Thank you very much.
It does not squash the application process upfront.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. And I have no questions at this point. I, as Councilmember Northrup said, we're on the committee together, and we met with Jennifer last week or a week and a half ago, and she was able to answer our questions. So let me move on now to written public comments for non-public hearing items were requested emailed in advance of tonight's meeting. Ms. Rodriguez, do we have any public comment on this discussion item number ten?
Madam Mayor, we did not receive any public comment.
Thank you. Okay, so now I'm going to call on each council member for deliberation, and if you have any additional questions, go ahead and ask them, but let's move on to deliberation. So let's start with Councilmember Northrup.
Sure, we've been waiting a long time to get this done. Obviously, we spent a lot of time with the, with LAFCO last year dealing with the questions about Area I. It's good to have everything all wrapped up in, in a report. I think it, you know, I appreciate all the work that went into it, the explanations that were provided, the time that was spent with both of us, and I would be in favor of going along with the staff recommendation to accept the presentation and to start, to go back to the Annexation Subcommittee to, you know, compile those comments and keep the process moving forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too was very excited when I got the report to dig in. I think the report is, has some wonderful, I think, redemptive thoughts for me, that some of the residential areas that need servicing will be included in our sphere of influence. I think that, you know, for Area I, with the area, mutual area of concern, I think that that is much of what we were discussing last year when we were talking about some competing applications, that there, there's absolutely some mutual concern, and I'm, I'm comfortable with the recommendations of the report, and I'm definitely comfortable with, with this going back to staff and committee to prepare a letter. I know that the Annexation Committee has been working on this for many, many years, and so I, I trust that their comments will be, you know, really representative of, of what their council wants to say about this, and I just want to thank you, because I'm very comfortable with, with what you found. I think it is what a lot of us were feeling, and it's great to see it on paper and on maps, so thank you.
Councilmember Amstead?
I as well, I want to say that I, I would like to see this passed as quickly as possible, and want to, especially for our residents in Liberty Canyon, really want to get the process moving as fast as possible so we can annex that section into the city. And so I, I agree with the, the comments in the presentation, obviously, and, and I, there's definitely some concerns I have, and I think they're being addressed, and I think that hopefully we'll come up with a mutually agreeable solution going forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Weber?
Yes, thank you. I also, I, I have no problem with accepting the presentation and, and sending it back to the Annexation Committee to assemble some of the comments, and, and then, then along to LAFCO. As I, as you, I think you know that I, I voted against the, the annexation of, I know it was either I or A, depending on which map you look at. And so that's my one concern, and my question was about the individuals that own those properties. So it's going to be interesting to see what ultimately comes out of this with LAFCO, but I'm, I'm fine with moving forward with this, that just stands right now.
Thank you. And I too, I've been on, working on this since 2014, so, and I have a lot of gray hair from it, to prove it. So I accept the presentation from the LAFCO consultant, so thank you for that, Jennifer, and you answered our questions last week. I have some things to, you know, to, concerns still that I have, so, you know, I will work with, you know, Linda, we're the Annexation Committee, and we'll come up with some final comments. And what I would suggest, I know that the hearing, LAFCO hearing is on September night, but I would, if, if staff can, can do this in time, I would like to try and bring back our final comments to the full council, maybe at the second meeting in August, or let me see when our first meeting, it would probably have to be the second meeting in August. And if there isn't time, then maybe staff can meet with each of you individually to go over, to we can figure something out on that, but it would be, it would be my preference to come back with you, to, to all of you with our final, the committee's final comment letter, so that you can, you know, feel comfortable with that. And so with that, I would call for a motion and a second to, one, accept the presentation from the LAFCO consultant on the draft municipal service review, sphere of influence update and comments, and two, direct staff to work with the Annexation Committee to compile comments on the draft municipal service review and finalize a comment letter from the city to the deadline.
This is Councilmember Linda Northrup. I so move with the addition that we will bring that comment back, letter back to the city council, if at all possible, before the LAFCO meeting, and if not, that staff will be directed to review that with the, the council members and obtain any additional comments before it's submitted.
I'll second that motion. This is Deborah Klein Lopez.
Thank you. I'll now call on a vote. Councilmember Amstead?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Northrup?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Buckley Weber, aye. The motion passes five nothing. Thank you all. Thank you again, Jennifer, nice job.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to our next discussion item. It is a discussion to consider the adoption of Resolution Number Twenty dash nineteen fifty-four, revising the Director of Emergency Services Executive Order Twenty Twenty dash zero one, imposing emergency regulations related to residential and commercial tenant evictions to extend the expiration of the tenant eviction moratorium period and to encourage landlords and tenants to agree to a rent repayment plan. Mr. Selaya will begin the staff presentation again tonight.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. At your June twenty-fourth meeting, the council adopted Resolution Twenty dash nineteen forty-eight that extended the emergency, Director of Emergency Services Executive Order Twenty 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 dash zero one, imposing emergency regulations related to residential and commercial tenant evictions. The resolution extended the moratorium from June thirtieth to July thirty-first. At that meeting, the council directed staff to continue to monitor the landscape of the COVID-19 pandemic and to return the proposed resolution to include information on rent repayment deadlines and possible distinction between residential and commercial properties. As you're all aware, unfortunately, the COVID-19 pandemic continues and is impacting all economy levels. Currently, the statistics continue to demonstrate substantial increases in confirmed cases and increased hospitalizations countywide and statewide. And in response to the crisis on June thirtieth, Governor Gavin, Governor Gavin Newsom issued Order Number Seventy-one dash twenty, which included extending the period in which local governments are allowed to have eviction moratoriums to September thirtieth of twenty twenty. At your June twenty-fourth meeting, the council expressed a desire to continue to be responsible for the decisions to eviction moratoriums and desire to try to maintain some type of consistency with respect to the moratorium ending dates and rent repayment timelines. Currently, the trend continues to demonstrate that many eviction moratoria conclude at determination of a local emergency versus a statewide emergency. This allows local agencies to maintain local control and have the, in a better position to determine how the emergency is impacting their community at large. The trend for term repayment still shows a majority of agencies within the six-month timeframe. There are still some agencies with one time, with one-year repayment timelines, which include the city of Westlake Village. While the county of Los Angeles is also one of these agencies with a one-year timeframe for commercial properties, the county has reduced the one-year repayment period to six months for commercial tenants with ten or more, fewer than a hundred employees. The county also requires that repayment begin at the conclusion of the moratorium and encourages landlords and tenants to agree upon a payment plan during the moratorium period. As an update, at yesterday's Board of Supervisors meeting, the county supervisors did extend the moratorium to September thirtieth of twenty twenty. Their conditions for rent repayment still remain the same. As the council has expressed a desire to avoid confusion for landlord and tenants and with respect to moratorium timelines and associated rent repayment timeframes, staff has respectfully recommended to extend the current moratorium to August thirty-first twenty twenty in light of the recent increases in COVID cases, and change the current conclusion of the eviction moratorium to conclude at the end of the moratorium period. Also, staff has recommended that you keep the timeframe to six months and encourage landlords and tenants to agree a repayment plan during the moratorium period, and if no repayment plan is agreed, within seven days following that period, then unpaid rent shall be six monthly payments. Staff has finally recommended that you keep the distinctions for both commercial and residential the same with respect to eviction moratorium timelines and rent repayment timeframes. This will allow the city's current eviction moratorium to align with the majority of agencies within the county of Los Angeles, provide similar consistency with the county's moratorium, but still allow the council to maintain local control on when it believes the eviction moratorium should be concluded. The resolution, the resolution in your agenda pack of this evening will extend the current moratorium to August thirty-first of twenty twenty, revise the conclusion of the eviction moratorium to conclude at the end of the moratorium, and direct landlords and tenants to agree to a payment plan. This concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions you have at this time.
Thank you, Louis. I just, before I start with the questions, yesterday at our COG meeting, Tessa, the, the district director for Supervisor Kuhl said that when the county extended the moratorium to September thirtieth, that cities could have a more restrictive, they, they could have a more restrictive moratorium, but they can't have a lesser moratorium. And so, the way I understood it, and I did a follow-up question, is that we could not, we would have to extend it to September thirtieth. Do you know, did you hear anything about that yesterday?
With the Board of Supervisors, they did make a change, and they did kind of have that discussion about how the county's moratorium could kind of act as the baseline. I guess there was a, a last-minute recommendation or motion by the Chair to kind of come back and revisit that in September. And so that current discussion or that particular issue is currently, hasn't been kind of vetted out yet from the county. So I think we could keep the moratorium to August thirty-first, but if the council desires, we could extend it to September thirty-first, or September thirty, if that's the council's desire this year.
Great, thank you very much. I was a little unclear yesterday, so thank you for clarifying that.
Kind of changed, it kind of changed, we were watching as well, it changed rather quickly.
Great, thank you. Okay, let's start with questions. Mayor Protem Weber, do you have any questions?
Well, I get until you asked it.
Oh, because you were at the COG meeting.
I know, and I was, and I was concerned that, I, I heard the same thing, at least, that, but I, I guess, no, I, I don't have any real questions. I guess I'll wait for we have some deliberations and comments after this, but it's quite evident that the examples that we've heard and read about since the last council meeting, it's very evident that not every landlord and/or tenant is working towards the same end results. It's pretty evident. There's some clashes, and so I feel very badly for both parties in many of these cases, so.
Right. Thank, Councilmember Lopez, do you have any questions?
I do have a question. So, Mr. Selaya, when the staff recommendation that extends the, the eviction moratorium for, until August, you're saying that it's, it's to align with the majority of other cities in the county, is that right? But then the county itself is not August, it's September?
Yes, originally, we, we were thinking possibly September, but we felt that maybe the council should, should be, you know, to make that final decision. If you want to, you can align to September. We're just saying, we, we didn't expect that the county would go to September, we thought they would kind of continue in their, their monthly review, and then when they change it, the staff report had already been done.
I see, so the staff report was written before you knew that the county was going for two months this time, rather than usual month-to-month?
Yeah.
Okay.
Followed in their historical kind of process.
Okay, and then my other question um is, is, and I don't know if you're the one to answer this, or, or maybe it's going to come from the COG, but, you know, this, I feel like this is a problem that is growing and is much, much bigger than us. Um, and we'll talk more about that in deliberation. But my question is, I, I'm not sure that we can keep trying to figure this out on our own. And so what type of larger discussions are being had right now to address this issue as a whole, either on a county level or a state level? Um, I know that, that I saw on the county's, um, I thought I saw on the county's agenda yesterday, there was some rent relief discussions. So what, what other discussions are happening at a, at a higher level than, than us to address this issue?
As far as I'm aware, the discussions that have been happening, kind of the bigger picture, have been at the county level. Um, they were talking initially before this particular action. Um, they were talking about potentially reducing some of the protections, but I think with the change of the, the kind of landscape of COVID and the increase in cases and the fact that this doesn't look like it's going to end quicker than we would like, um, I think the county's going to probably have those bigger discussions. But um, they probably need that, I'm assuming that's why they're not meeting till September on this. They're going to have to kind of look at, look at what the big overall, you know, picture means for everyone in general. And I think that's, that's kind of my thoughts on that.
Okay, and I, I apologize that I, I didn't have a chance to go through their agenda before today, but do you know what the result was of that rent review item? I, I, I don't have the details of it.
We did not ask. Well, we can find out. We can find out.
That'd be great. Yeah, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but.
No, we can ask supervisor staff if there's any.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. That, that's it. Thank you.
Council member Anstead, questions?
No questions. I talked about it during discussion.
Okay, and council member Northrup, have I already asked for you?
Uh, no. I did have a question. And I don't know whether it's Louis or Nate or someone else, but uh, to the extent that there are business relief programs, uh, do you know whether these landlords of these commercial properties would be eligible for seeking uh relief uh as being in the property leasing business uh to the equal extent that the tenants would be in a position to seek relief from similar sources for business operations? Financial relief I'm talking about.
I have not seen any relief for commercial tenant or property owners. I know there's programs available for tenants, but I have, I'm not aware. We, we probably have to look at that.
And let me ask you maybe more specifically. We, we authorized a contribution to the Cano Chamber for businesses that might be renting property, renting space in some of the commercial centers around town. Uh, are the owners of those commercial centers eligible to put in an application for some, you know, I know it's small amounts when you talk about what, what we can do as a city, but are they equally able as business owners, even though their business is the leasing of property, are they equally able to put in for the financial relief?
At this point in time, they are not, um, I don't believe that they meet necessarily the criteria that was set up. Doesn't mean that that can't be reviewed, but as, as it stands right now, they are not eligible.
Okay. And then my other question is, to the extent, does anybody know if the measures under discussion at the county level for residential rent relief, i.e. getting people some money so they can pay their rent, at least on some level, um, would, do we know whether that's going to just be unincorporated county or whether they're including the cities in the county of Los Angeles in these discussions? So I, our residents would be eligible to apply for anything that's coming forth from the county?
I would suspect, I would suspect it might just be unincorporated because it's, I think as you read the resolution, a lot of their, their moratorium is, is connected to their unincorporated areas.
Maybe this goes to the question about whether their moratorium is going to be binding on us?
Yes.
Okay, so something we can explore between now and August, I take it?
Yes.
Okay, well then, that's all I need at this point in time. Thank you.
Okay, um, I don't have any questions at this point in time. So why don't we, um, we're going to move on to public comment. Written public comments for non-public hearing items were requested to be emailed in advance of tonight's meeting. Ms. Rodriguez, do we have any public comments on this discussion item number eleven?
Thank you, yes. Public comments were received by email on or before four P M. today and forwarded to the city council prior to the meeting and consist of the following: Agoura Hills residents, Claire Martin, Ed and Emily Fagundes, and Caroline. There are no further comments.
Thank you. Um, okay, so now I'm gonna, we're gonna deliberate on this issue. So why don't I start with council member Northrup?
Sure. I, you know, this is a tough one. And I'm mindful of, you know, the, the comments that we've received and I have, you know, I have concerns. Um, you know, I've got a mortgage that people expect me to pay and while it, you know, it would certainly break my heart if I don't have the money. I'm going to put food on my table and, you know, clothes on my kids, first of all. Um, so it's a, it's a heartbreaking issue to have to be dealing with. Frankly, I'm in favor of keeping the moratorium on a month-to-month basis. Uh, between now and August, we can look into the, the, the issues that have been raised by the council, get the staff to come back in August and report to us. And I, I'm uncomfortable pushing it out to September at this moment because I think that as a city, I hold out some hope that if our residents do the things that we're asking them to do, and they wear their masks and they practice social distancing and they wash their hands, I do think there's always a possibility that we may be able to reach a level of control and, you know, flattening the curve here that might possibly allow us to, you know, do some things that would allow us to help people. Um, maybe not. I don't know. But, but I, I think that we need to look at it on a month-to-month basis, so I'm comfortable going to August thirty-first. I also think we need to find the answer to the question. If LA County is going to assert their moratorium covers us, then, you know, we'll have to look at that at the end of August. And, you know, then if they're going to require us to be in lockstep, I do think that raises the issue, though, that if they're going to impose that requirement on us, then whatever they do for the residents of LA County, we have to make sure that we lobby to, to make sure that the residents of Agoura Hills, the businesses and everyone else have the ability to tap into whatever benefits are being, you know, put together to help people weather this storm. And that doesn't just include the people who have to pay rent. It includes the people who own the property and use that rent to pay mortgage utilities and everything else. So, um, you know, not to belabor the subject, but I, and I, I would also like to, you know, just in terms of this discussion, have uh maybe a consideration at the August thirty-first meeting of, you know, whether our relief programs, to the extent they exist, ought to include these commercial property owners because they're business people too. Uh, they operate the property in which our local businesses uh live and serve us. And to me, they're no less worthy as business owners. Um, you know, and honestly, particularly a small, you know, center like the one that Claire Martin wrote to us about, this isn't a, you know, giant commercial national conglomerate. Uh, this is a, a small business owner in our community. So I'd really like to, you know, consider as a part of this, as a part of extending it, looking into whether there is some way that we can, you know, expand that, the definition to allow some of these smaller, you know, businesses, uh, not necessarily the large commercial chains. Uh, that always offends me when a multi-billion dollar company is coming in for quote relief funds. But we don't, you know, we have people in Agoura Hills that aren't in that category. So I, I'm comfortable moving to August thirty-first. Uh, I'd like to have the staff come back to us with a more definitive position, if possible, on LA County's position as to whether we are subject to their moratorium and perhaps some investigation on these other issues. Uh, but at this time, I, I just think, given the rising COVID cases and situation we find ourselves in and not knowing right now whether we are uh going to be violating something that the county will take a position is binding on us, I'm comfortable, uh, in all those respects, moving forward to extend it to August thirty-first.
And do you have any thoughts on the other two issues about keeping the same distinctions for both commercial and residential?
I'm sorry, I'm comfortable keeping the timeframe to six months. And we can look at that as time goes on. Um, at this point in time, I do think I'm comfortable leaving it at six months. And um, and then we can, you know, we can take a look at it again in August when we've got a little bit more information.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm, I'm comfortable with both commercial and residential being at six months.
Okay, great. Uh, Mayor Protem Weber?
I'm mute.
I too am, uh, really, really concerned about the way this, this is spiraling almost out of control, I believe. Um, but I think I had a conversation with Mr. Hamburger um regarding what I thought I saw in the county's um sort of bailout effort that the, the, the tenants could put in for a, a loan. Um, and then, but the monies would then flow to the landlord or the owner of the property. Uh, so I think, um, I'd like to pursue that. I thought I saw that in, in one of the county um, uh, reports. So I think we, I'd like to do that because I agree with um, with, with Lyda just said. Uh, it, we don't know how much this is going to affect us long-term. Uh, we're already seeing people that are just giving up and walking away. And um, uh, but it, it just, I go back to some of the examples we've seen over the last week or two of um, not everybody is teaching, is behaving, I guess, uh, cohesively, trying to reach the same, the same end result. And I, I worry about the landlords, but I worry about more tenants as well. Uh, but right now, I'm, I would be in favor of staying, only going to the end of August um as well and for both uh residential and commercial. I don't want to belabor this, but um, I hope we can find a way to uh help everybody get through this. Uh, but of course, we're not, no, if we're on, we're, I feel like when I keep talking about this, it's like you're on a hamster on a, on a wheel. We're not getting anywhere. So, thank you.
Uh, Mayor Protem, and are you comfortable with staff's recommendation to keep the repayment timeframe at six months at, at this point in time?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, council member Lopez?
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. Like, like I said during the questioning portion, this is becoming an issue that I just feel is, is way beyond our ability to keep up with. Um, you know, for every email we get from a tenant who wants relief and some comfort that they aren't going to be evicted, we get a similar letter from a landlord who's relying on that income, whether it's a commercial property or, or a duplex or, you know, some rental property that, you know, they're relying on that rent for their bills as well. So, you know, the answer is some kind of, of financial relief as uh Mayor Protem Weber was saying, that, that can keep everybody housed and safe and stable, um, but still allow the landowners to, or the property owners to pay the bills that aren't uh, aren't easing up for them. So I, I don't have the answer to that and I, I know that it's a bigger question that, that has to get hashed out on, on, in levels where there is a lot more money to be given than, than anything we could, could possibly do. Um, you know, I'm, I'm actually in favor of pushing the um, or the extension to September. I would, I think it would be um less confusing for residents who must be confused all over the place, whether you're in unincorporated or a city or, or the city of LA. Um, I don't know what the city of LA is doing if they're on the county's, if they're lockstep with the county. But um, I, I would be comfortable staying in sync with the county. We're in sync with the county um with just about everything else COVID-related. And I'm all for local control for sure, but on, on something like this, I think it, it gives our residents some um consistency and some comfort. So I would, I would be in favor of, of staying uh in step with them. Um, and again, the, the six-month, twelve-month, you know, as you know, I, I talked to a lot of people who are trying to get unemployment. Um, they're, they're absolutely desperate. So I'm, I'm okay with staying with it for now, but I do, as, as time goes on, always want to revisit the, moving the residential to a twelve-month repayment only because I just know how desperate some people are right now. And there were, so many people were finally able to get back to work and now we're locked down again and they've lost their job again. And people are just being yo-yos right now. So um, I, I'm okay with it for now, but um, I, I would be in favor of, of extending to September if the majority of the council chooses to do so. Thank you.
Thank, council member Anstead?
Well, I actually, um, the, the extension to August or September, I'm completely comfortable, actually. I also believe that there were still going to be, there's still a financial impact going to be happening in September. And so I would feel very comfortable extending it to September um and then sick, having the six-month repayment uh from that date. The, the one thing that I did when I read the staff report or the staff recommendation, um, I did like, what I, what I liked about it was that they did put in provisions concerning landlord and tenant getting together to try to come up with the repayment terms. However, what the, the one sentence that I wasn't, that I would like to change or consider for change is that in the, in the terms, it says that if the landlord and tenant don't agree to repayment terms, that it reverts to the tenant paying uh six equal payments um after fourteen days, I think, from the end of the, the moratorium. So I, I would say that that's not really fair to the tenant because the tenant might have been out of work and just starting back at work and, and getting income. And if he's for six monthly or six equal payments, he's not necessarily going to have as much money the first month that he's going to have at the end of the six months. And uh, so I would change it maybe to be, if they weren't able to agree, that they would have maybe three equal payments starting on the third month after the moratorium, um, if they weren't able to agree. And um, so the only, the rationale for the six months is to allow the tenant to have enough income coming in to be able to cover that, those back payments. And I just don't see how within the first month after the moratorium ends that he's going to have enough money to pay uh six monthly equal installments. So uh, that was, those were my feelings, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. And so my comments are, are similar to all of yours. Um, you know, with the numbers going up, I just could not see not extending the moratorium. I don't see how it helps any, anyone in our city, um, that people are basically out on the street. So um, I am supportive of extending the current moratorium. I'm comfortable for the reasons that both um council member Anstead and Lopez have stated, which is I, it creates confusion when we're not, you know, everything we're trying to do since March eighteenth is to stay along with the county. And it's been, everything from closing down to reopening to re-closing, everything has been a little confusing. And I know that I've said it a hundred times, um, with all due respect to the governor and all due respect to um Mayor Garcetti. You know, don't listen to them right now. Listen to the county because that's where people are, to send them to the county website because that's where they're going to get their information. So uh, that's one reason that I would like to extend the moratorium to September thirtieth. I also think that it's, it's a, a ti, staff spends time updating this and getting it ready every thirty days. I have a feeling we're going to find out in the next few weeks that what the county is intending is for us to follow suit with them on the dates of the extension of the moratoriums. We'll see how that all pans out. Um, you know, I, so I would feel comfortable extending it to September thirtieth. And lastly, I also think for both tenants and landlords. Um, you know, thirty days goes by pretty fast. And so this gives them a little, maybe discomfort or comfort knowing that we're not going to be discussing that. comfort, knowing that we're not going to be discussing this for another 60 days, that, you know, things are not going to change at the end of August necessarily, you know, that they would be coming and then we would extend it again to the end of September. So I'm comfortable with extending it to September 30th and, and being in line with both the state and the county. Regarding the repayment timeframe, I'm, I'm comfortable with staying at six months at this point in time. And I do agree with Councilman Anstead. I had a little bit of a problem. First of all, in the staff report, it said that we would be directing landlords and tenants to agree to a pre-payment plan. I don't feel like that's our job. I'm uncomfortable stepping into that relationship in that way, encouraging them to work out. And maybe this is something that we can look at in the next few weeks, is what can we do as a city to encourage landlords and tenants who might not even be talking to each other right now, to come together? Maybe we can help facilitate that, maybe through our, you know, maybe there's things we can do and we can explore that and encourage them to work out a payment plan. I also do agree that the whole point of a six month repayment plan is so that you don't have to repay for six months. So if all of a sudden we step in and mandate that there has to be six equal payments, I, I, I'm uncomfortable with stepping into that. I feel as if they either work out a payment plan, arguably when the moratorium ends, they're already paying the present month, month to month, and they've got six months to come up with the money that they owe the landlord. And I know this is really difficult on landlords too. I mean, I've, we've all said it. This is just an impossible situation for tenants and landlords. And I agree, we need more guidance from the state and the county to figure out how we're going to work through this. But for right now, my view would be to extend it to September 30th, do whatever we can as a city to sit down with people, get them talking, encourage them to work out a payment plan so that the landlord knows that money is going to be coming. And I, I'm comfortable with commercial and residential being treated the same right now. So that's my thoughts on it. Does anybody else have any other thoughts on it? Let me go back to Mayor Protem Weber and Councilmember Northrup on how strongly they feel about revisiting this on August, at our second meeting in August, which is the 26th versus waiting until, you know, a meeting in September.
Now, Madam Mayor, I have no problem extending to the end of September. It, it makes sense. And I got educated and I, I, I just, I hate to just give into the county in every respect, but I, I think it makes sense for us and our group of people. So I have no problem going to the end of September instead of August.
Thank you. And by the way, Mayor Protem Weber, we must have been in place because I heard that update too, that there was going to be 10,000, up to $10,000 loans that were going to be sent directly to landlords. Somewhere I've heard that too. So we can, you know, we can have a check on that.
Okay, good.
So somewhere, I heard the same thing. We must have been.
It's in our dreams.
Yeah. Councilmember Northrup, your thoughts?
Yeah, I'm comfortable going to September. I just still want to, you know, in the interim period, have staff be working on, you know, exploring the, the correlation between the county's regulations and ours, so we get clarity. And also be looking into these, you know, financial relief programs and making absolutely sure that we're advocating with the county to make sure that the city of Agoura Hills is included as a potential beneficiary of all of our residents and businesses. Because as Councilmember Klein Lopez said, this is going to be a bigger problem the longer it goes on. And it would, it would make me very upset if the county is, if we're going along with the county in, in enacting these moratoriums, and then all of a sudden there's relief being put out there, but not including the cities in that relief. So with that, I'm, I'm comfortable going out to September and leaving the, the deadlines at six months and not intervening, letting, you know, encouraging landlords and tenants to work it out. And maybe thinking about, you know, when we had the Woolsey fire, we had a case manager, maybe there's an ombudsman, you know, maybe we can look at some kind of a program of potentially, you know, a voluntary mediation for landlords and tenants that want to get together and have a discussion about that. You know, there are, there are people that might be willing to volunteer time for such a program. I know my husband is a mediator and he volunteers times for the courts. So I think there are some things we can look into to facilitate those discussions so that people don't feel like they're just in the dark about what's going to happen at the end of this. And I certainly think such a person can also help people know what the programs are where they can seek relief. So with all those things being said, I'm very comfortable moving to September.
And, and I, I think that's a good idea. I'd like to see staff work on that. And I also like the idea, and maybe Mr. Hamburger, you can talk to the chamber. Let's clarify whether or not our property owners can be part of that pool to get some of those, those were grants, not loans. I know it's not a lot of money, but it might cover a month. So, you know, let's see if we, if they're eligible for that. And then we can get that information out to the public. So, so I think, so let me turn to Mr. Selaya. Do you have information? Do you have any questions? Do you see the direction we, that kind of information we want for your next report?
Yes. I do have one question, just for clarification. What I'm hearing from the full council is you like the repayment language, but you prefer to remove the kind of section that doesn't, if they can't meet, you want that language removed?
I, that's a good point. We didn't, we didn't all discuss that.
You kind of talked about it and I heard, yeah, I'm good with that. I just kind of want to make sure, because we can obviously revise the resolution to change the date. But I did hear some discussion about, you know, the, the rent repayment, if they don't come to an agreement, we just want to say they can change it to just encourage it and leave it at that.
So I think, I think Councilmember Anstead and I were, we opposed that. So let me turn to the other three. Councilmember Lopez, what's your thoughts on that?
I'm comfortable with the language that you suggested, Madam Mayor, to, you know, be able to do our part to encourage, but not get into the middle of a, of a private agreement.
Okay. I just saw our city attorney flash on my screen, which means she might want to say something. Lee, do you have something to add?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. So currently, the new language was revised to, so if you see in your agenda packet, the resolution was revised to state that the tenants and landlords are encouraged to incur a rent repayment plan. But if they couldn't agree, then that kind of automatic rent repayment would be whatever you owe, you add that all up, and you divide it by six and you pay it over six months. It's not that you're having to pay all six months in that, within 14 days, you're splitting it up. So you can, I would suggest either just striking that language, so it just says we're encouraging it, and we're not even going to get into, you know, how much they need to repay if they don't. I suppose at some point, the landlord would just decide that they were going to bring an unlawful detainer action. Or if you want to revise that language to, you know, specify what those equal monthly installments are, you don't like the six equal months, six monthly installments, you want a different number, that would be the other option.
This is Council.
All right, Councilmember Anstead.
I, I, I wanted to definitely, I think, I mean, I just feel like, I kind of agree with what you were saying, that I feel uncomfortable too, now when I, when you closely examine it, to dictating any term, because I can see one party or the other trying to sue the city, saying that we violated their private agreement by trying to dictate the repayment terms through the city. So I, I agree. I think we should just say that we highly encourage the landlords to come to agreement and tenants to come to agreement.
Councilmember Lopez?
I think that sounds wise.
Mayor Protem Weber?
I agree.
Councilmember Northrup?
Couldn't agree more.
Thank you all. And thank you, Louis, for asking us, because sometimes we think we've answered all the questions. So thank you for getting more direction from us. It's helpful for us.
It did help us as well. And we'll, and we'll make those changes. I'll work with the city attorney and make those changes on the resolution.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay, now, this is getting harder because I forget the lights on when I start the meeting. So let me call for, let me just see where I am. One sec. I'm calling for a motion and a second to, and I would suggest, you know, somebody can come up with their own language, but that we're, you know, extending the moratorium to September 30th, 2020, and that staff will come back to us before that time with an update on information for our questions. And, and, and feel free, staff, to come back at the end of August on that issue, just to give us more information on the questions we've asked. But for right now, the moratorium would stay in place until September 30th. And so if somebody wants to take a stab at a motion and a second?
Councilmember Northrup, I will move the adoption of an amended resolution that extends the moratorium to the September date that has been adopted by the county and revising the language per the discussion of council to encourage repayment, but not to set terms. And that as a part of that motion, we would ask staff to give us a report at the August meeting on the issues that the council has discussed.
Nice job. Thank you.
And Mayor Protem Weber will second.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Anstead.
I second it. Go ahead. Aye. Whatever.
Councilmember Lopez?
I always, I am always with gratitude that it's Councilmember Northrup who makes a motion like that.
Councilmember Northrup?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Buckley Weber, aye, the motion passed as 5-0. And now we will move on to council comment. But let's start with you, Councilmember Anstead. Do you have comments for tonight?
Sure. I, I think the only comments I want to state is I want to continue to encourage our residents to wear their mask. And also, I want to encourage them to keep the faith. I think it's, it's a, it's a long battle that we're having with this virus. And just want to try to keep everybody's spirits up and want people to try to enjoy themselves outside, whether that's hiking, eating outside, enjoying the beautiful weather that we've been having here in Agoura. I know I've been sitting outside in my backyard, eating dinner with my family, and we've been really enjoying that as a, as a family unit. And so I highly encourage other residents to do the same and, and try to enjoy the time with our families this time. And lots of encouraging news, obviously, on the vaccine front coming out over the last couple of days. I, I think things are moving along well. And there's also further treatments that are also moving through clinical trials. So I'm really encouraged that, that there's going to be a lot of new therapies plus the vaccine in the next three to six months. So everybody just needs to continue to practice safe distancing, wear your mask, and keep the faith. So that's, again, that's, that's my words of wisdom today. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to give you a few statistics from today. We are, our, our new case rate is double today what it was a month ago. So we have over 2,000 new cases a day on average of a seven day period. It was, that's, that's double what it was a month ago. And 50%, 57% of new cases are in people who are under 41 years old. So that is a huge change from what we've seen over the past few months. 57% under 41. I just, it's hard for me to wrap my mind around that. And so this is why I kind of go crazy when I see groups of young people hanging out in close proximity with no masks. And I want to thank our staff for, you know, doing patrols around our parks and open spaces. You know, we're not trying to be bad guys, breaking up people from enjoying the outdoors, but we, we are trying to ensure that people who are not from within the same household, we want to make sure they're not congregating. So I want to thank the residents who are, are doing it right. And I, I want to stress to, to any who, who feel that it's just no big deal to congregate, that it's a big deal, that those statistics are changing rapidly and, and we have to get a handle on it. The second thing I want to say is I am so proud of our restaurants who have applied for and enacted the, the outdoor dining, the permits. I drive around town and it is so fun to see what these restaurants, the creativity with how they're setting up their outdoor patios, my dog has to bark right now, as always, with, with, you know, with sun protection, umbrellas, with plants. It's just, it's so fun to see. And I, I couldn't agree more with you, Mayor Buckley Weber, that we need to, you know, patronize these restaurants, because all of that tax revenue comes back to the city and, and the, the revenue itself is helping keep our small businesses and especially those restaurants alive. So good job to the, to the outdoor dining. And finally, I want to say that at our next council meeting, I sure hope that you are able to share that our website is agourahillcity.org. And when you read from the beginning, Madam Mayor, you can say www.agourahillcity.org. It's a lot shorter than our old website address. It's working. I've sent myself about 100 test emails because I'm so excited about it. And I want to thank our city manager for, for, for getting that up and running. And of course, the, the staff that worked on that. So agourahillcity.org. Very excited. So thank you.
Me too. Although I've gotten pretty good at the old one.
You have. You've gotten good at it.
Councilmember Northrup?
Well, it, you know, these are challenging times. It goes without saying, but I think it's important to say that because, you know, people have a lot of shoulds in their minds and, you know, should be able to cope. And aren't we lucky? We live in this beautiful place. And, you know, most of us do have, you know, food on our table and a roof over our heads. And, and I want to just throw three words out there that are so meaningful to me right now, and that is faith, family, and friends. And it's important to connect. It's important to show people that you care about them and accept people caring about you. And I know I speak for all of the people on this council and, and the city staff that we care so much about the people that we serve. And we're here. We get a lot of emails and requests. I even had someone this week reach out to me on, on my personal Facebook page with a, with a problem and a concern. And I was so, I was so pleased to be able to immediately cut and paste that request and send it on to Nate. So we care, but I think, you know, it's, it's important for all of us to understand that these are challenging times. Nobody should pretend that they're happy times, but there can be moments of happiness in every challenging time. So faith, friends, and family, and cling to what makes you feel good and feel positive. And we will all get through this, as our mayor is fond of saying, we are Agoura Hills together and we will get through this. So, you know, again, thank you all. And, you know, we will, we will get through it. Wear your mask. Wear your mask.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Weber?
Well, you all say what I feel. So, I mean, I don't want to belabor the point, but I, I wanted to agree with, with Debbie's observation that you still see some young people hanging out. And I, I just don't get it. I never will. But so I just, I plead with what their, their good senses do, to make the commitment to keep yourself safe with people around you. It's, it, don't, don't, it's the selfish act that you sort of disregard someone else's health and, and safety. When I, when I send emails to my clients, it's like I have states, safe and healthy and happy, just, just like I heard tonight. And I, I wish that for all the, the people in Agoura Hills and the businesses as well. I, every day, my daily prayers, I keep, I keep all of us in my thoughts. And I hope that God listens to me and blesses all of us, as he always has been. So that's all I have tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. And I echo all of the sentiments that you guys have beautifully stated tonight. And I would just remind young people, and I, I don't think that they're watching right now, but if you have young people in your family, remind them that we do not know what the long-term effects of being stricken by COVID-19. So they may not have compromised health now, but if they get COVID- compromised health now, but if they get COVID-19, they may have compromised health by the time they're my age. So, they really need to stay healthy for both themselves and their families, and the children in their families. It's just, you know, we just got to hang in there and, and keep moving forward. We're gonna get through this. We know we will. We will, as a community, support our local businesses, and we're getting there. You know, it saddens me that the next time we have a meeting, we're probably going to have more than 100 confirmed cases of COVID-19 in Agoura Hills. And I remember when we were in our 30s, and I thought, ooh, we're doing really well. We're not gonna get up there. So, it is happening in our community. We're not alone. It's happening in Calabasas, Malibu, Westlake Village. It's happening everywhere. So, it is, we need to be very diligent and do what the experts say, which is not that big of a deal. It's distance yourself six feet from people outside, and, you know, try and stay in your family pod, and of course, wear a face covering. The pressure and stress on our business owners, when you walk in without a face covering, is staggering. So, please, do it for them, do it for us, do it for yourself. So, thanks, everybody, for tonight. We, I'll now, the next regular meeting of the city council will be held at 6:00 p.m., Wednesday, August 12th, 2020, in the council chambers of the civic center. It is anticipated that the meeting will be held by video conference, and person attendance by the public in the council chambers will not be permitted. At this time, we will adjourn tonight's meeting. Would somebody give me a second?
I make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting. This is Deborah Klein Lopez.
Councilmember Northrup, second.
Thank you. I'll call for a vote. Woof. Councilmember Amstead?
That wasn't me, by the way. Yeah, aye.
It's gotta be Finn.
It's not.
Oh. Councilwoman Lopez?
He's sleeping right next to me. Aye.
Councilmember Northrup?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Weber?
Aye.
And Mayor Elise Buckley Weber, aye. The motion passes 5-0. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Bye-bye.
Have a great day. Great evening.